To call the regular meeting of the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to apply in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the Secretary please note that all Commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioners McCollough, New, Sherman, and Wilkinson. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting of the Board dated March 26, 1996. A motion, please.
Motion.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of March 26? If there are not, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The next item on the agenda is Communications. To the best of my knowledge, there are no written communications to the Board, but it's my intent as a Board member, in a written communication to the Board, to propose a resolution that hopefully the Board will discuss and possibly act upon as a result of some of the activities that gained notoriety of the past week. Most of Rutland is now aware of the false allegations made by a few parents against two teachers in one of our schools during the course of the last ten days. Our Board wishes to extend its thanks and appreciation to the local police department, Superintendent Brothers, Assistant Superintendent Walk, our administrators and staff, all of whom responded in an appropriate and timely fashion to investigate and bring the situation to a proper closure. We especially wish to acknowledge the professionalism of Principals Lorraine Crowley and Meredith Buddhist, whose most professional response to the problem helped our district turn a negative event into a positive learning experience for the entire Rutland community. As a Board, we encourage our staff to further the concept of lessons about respect at school. We also want to emphasize to our community that we can only educate and role model behaviors to the children they send to us. What our children learn at home can enhance or impede their education. That choice belongs to the parents and adults in our community. Our Rutland City School Board wishes by our action to publicly endorse the actions of our administration and staff in effecting a philosophy involving respect by children and parents for our schools, our staff, and each other. If it moves anybody, I would accept a motion to endorse this proposal.
I'd make that motion.
Second. Any discussion or comments?
It says it all.
Says it all. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the proposed resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And Dr. Brothers, I would hope that you would distribute that to our staff.
We certainly will, with pleasure.
Okay. Are there any citizens in our audience who wish to address the Board regarding any issues? If not, I think Dr. Brothers has some comments about special recognition of a certain seventh grader who's in our audience with his family tonight.
Yes, we certainly would, and I'd just like to turn it over to Sandy Bassett to introduce our special guest tonight, please, Sandy, and just tell us a little bit about the achievement. Please come on up here, let's put him on camera.
I would like to introduce to you Robbie Wettler. Robbie is a seventh grader at our school who recently achieved something very, very significant that I asked Dr. Brothers if he might be willing to share with you. A week ago Saturday, one week ago Saturday, Robbie participated in the National Geographic sponsored GOB, representing Rutland Middle School, himself and his family, in a geography competition. It was in Middlebury? Middlebury. And there were ninety-three other participants in this GOB, which is another, an acronym for a contest, a geography contest. The winner of this contest would represent the state of Vermont in the national competition in Washington, and it's my pleasure to say to you that Robbie won the contest out of ninety-three representatives from across the state of Vermont. He worked with Mrs. Christine Beecham from our school, his family here, the Wettler family. Robbie's had a long time interest in geography, came from Alaska, and has always studied The results are in the pudding, so they say. So, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to congratulate you and thank you. This is Superintendent Brothers. I don't know if you had met you before.
No, met Mom and Dad, but never met this young man. Gotta shake your hand. You know a lot more about geography than I do. I'll admit that, because I heard what the winning question was, and I had the foggiest thing.
Robbie will be going with Mrs. Beecham and his family to Washington at the end of May to represent the state of Vermont in the competition. It's a heck of an honor, and we are all very thankful and congratulatory.
Robbie, before you leave, I think you ought to share with the audience what the grand prize is that you'll be shooting for in Washington.
In Washington, DC, whoever wins the competition gets to go to the internationals, which this year are being held in Moscow, Russia, and they get a $25,000 scholarship.
Big time.
And to the best of our knowledge, I believe Robbie is the first all-around state champion from our school system in this competition?
I didn't know that, but that's excellent.
I think that's quite significant. We're proud of you, and we're happy that you're now representing the Rutland school system, and we congratulate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck.
When I heard what, when I read the newspaper what the winning question was, when he had the answer, first of all, I could not have answered the question, but when I read the answer, I still didn't know.
Well, we'd also like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Wettler for deciding to settle in Rutland City last summer after they came here from Alaska and were visiting school systems and investigating the county and maybe other parts of the state, and we're certainly very pleased that they made the choice to come here, because Robbie's fit in pretty well with us, and I hope that the rest of the family is too. Nice to have you here.
And to say the least, you've put us on the geographical map already. Thank you. Okay. Moving on in the agenda, the next item is the Personnel Memorandum, and at this time the Chair would entertain a motion that the Licensed and Non-L licensed Section of the Personnel Memorandum, Number 129, dated April 5, 1996, be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Motion.
Second. I would ask Dr. Brothers to address the memorandum, please.
Thank you, Dr. Dick. There's actually sort of two separate pieces to the memorandum tonight. First, there's the Reduction in Force piece, which I'd like to ask the Board to enact either now or when I go through the rest of the recommendations. Let me explain that to you right now. There are two formal recommendations for abolishing two positions. One of them is the Teacher of the Deaf position, which is a single person that was in that category. Those two students that are in our high school this year will both be attending Mill River High School next year. So, that's the reason why we're effecting that Reduction in Force. And I have spoken, of course, with the particular teacher, and she understands that. Of course, no one likes this type of action, but this could very well be that she would end up handling the same two students at Mill River next year. Of course, that decision is in Mill River's hands. The second one is simply another Reduction in Force, which is part of our developing plans for this new EBD program. It's a position, the program we established in Longfellow School this year, this tutoring program, abolishing that position will help us fund this other program next year, and that's been part of our planning all along. So, those are the two that I would ask you to act upon tonight. We'll do that later, and go through the rest.
What is your pleasure in that regard?
Why don't you act on those first, and then I'll go through the rest of your recommendations. I'd like that you do those as a separate item.
Okay, there's currently a motion on the floor to approve both the Licensed and Non-L licensed Section. If the Maker and the Seconder would approve, we would eliminate the Non-L licensed Section from the motion, and the Superintendent would like us to act on the Licensed Section alone. Will the Maker and Second accept? Okay. Is there any discussion or question regarding the amended motion? John?
This, I understand the first one. The second one, this isn't a reaction to the fact that we might get less money, this is...
So, it's part of the planning for the EBD program for next year.
So, this program, this wouldn't come back if we got our level someday?
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion that the Non-L licensed Section of the Personnel Memorandum, Number 129, dated April 5, 1996, be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Motion.
Second.
Dr. Brothers.
The remaining recommendations on the Non-L licensed Section of the memorandum are under appointments Janet McClellan, who will be a replacement Media Secretary in the Intermediate School, to replace Kristy Furliott, that you approved at a prior meeting, to come over here and fill in for Sherri when she goes on her maternity leave in just about another two weeks. So, that's what the first item is. The second one, Diane Bigelow, is a par educator being hired to assist with a new student that's moved into the Northwest School that has some hearing difficulties. Barbara McLaughlin and Martha Smith are two intermediate school playground aides, are strictly replacement personnel for positions that were already there and budgeted. The second item, the D maternity leave, is for Lisa Calla, who is the Secretary at the Activities Office, to be effective on or about May 20. Those will complete the recommendations on the memorandum.
Any questions or comments regarding the memorandum? Cheryl?
On the new position, Diane Bigelow, the funding for that position is coming from where?
The funding will come in part from the Special Education System to about ninety percent, Bob, approximately.
Well, at this point, we don't think we'll hit the...
That's right.
We're just hitting a ten to twenty percent.
Ten to twenty percent. This is one of those cases, Cheryl, where students come in at a point in the year where you can't get over the threshold to get the ninety percent money. That's one of the problems with the existing system, just that sometimes a student leaves, sometime in the mid-year point where you can't get the reimbursement for that student. So, this is a case where we only get the twenty percent reimbursement, have to pay for most of our local...
Okay, I guess, I guess my concern is, or question is, is because it is one of those cases where we are going to be having to use our own general fund for the bulk of this person. Is there, is there any way, or has anyone explored the option of perhaps taking someone from another class part-time, or shifting people around in order to absorb this?
Yes, yes. Yes, we did, and we just didn't find that that was possible with this particular case, but we did do that.
Okay.
We're constantly looking at those types of situations in the Special Education field.
Is this better termed than unfunded mandate?
Yes, I guess that's one way to define it.
Further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Instructional development? Dr. Brothers?
Tonight, according to our schedule, we're going to discuss the high school budget, at least to the extent that we can with the cutback so far, and a little bit about the Stafford Technical Center budget. I would like just to make a couple of comments about the general budget status and state aid. I don't have much to say to you, because the numbers remain just as they were the last time we met, which was two weeks ago, and we remain waiting to see what actions that the Legislature do take with respect to state aid. As you probably follow newspaper media accounts, the budget is in the Senate and being debated there at this time, and it will eventually, the budget will eventually get settled in some way by the Senate, and then probably go to Conference Committee, so there's some sort of merging between the two bills from both respective Houses. There's nothing really new to report at all in terms of what the allocations would be for Rutland City or any other school district. So, we would still be operating on the worst-case scenario and have that plan to put in effect if it may be. Certainly, we still don't see that that will be the case, and we hope that there will be some sort of break in the logjam, and they'll come up with some other slightly higher figure. Hopefully, it'll go back to the Governor's Budget, which is about two and a half million dollars more in state aid. But that's what we're waiting upon, to make, to help the Board here and help all of us make some of our final decisions. If there's no questions about that, I really can't provide much more information. I'll move on and have Bruce come up and proceed with the high school discussion.
Before Bruce proceeds, I would just apologize to the left wing of the Board. It was my intent to have the screens and everything relocated to the other side.
I'm a right wing.
I consider myself a right wing.
But that's that. We'll be taking care of it prior to the next move.
Well, following the, no change in budget status, Dr. Brothers, in regards to Legislature, what I'd like to discuss with you this evening is where we stand in regards to the budget at the high school. What you have, what I have up here, basically breaks down our supplies and instructions monies that are proposed for the ninety-six, ninety-seven budget, and I've broken it down into four areas. I've broken out three of the areas outside of the actual, all the rest of the curriculum instruction. First one being the Pay Center, our Pay Center Spanish, Pay Center Mathematics, and Pay Center English. And the reason we break these out is because there's a set cost for each one of these prescribed through Pay Center, and that cost for this year will be a little over $5,000. Media Center we break out, so that we get a better look at the fact that, number one, the Media Center basically covers all of our curricular areas. It's a reutilization of all the students and staff, and we're looking at a figure of $14,648 there. Again, Administration covers the gamut, including graduation, supplies, and printing for the school, at a little under $10,000. That leaves, out of our total proposed budget of $101,502 for supplies and instruction, it leaves us $71,691 for all the other curricular areas. And just so you get a sense of those other curricular areas, and the, and the impact, we did a breakdown of the, each of the departments. The number of instructors is in this column, the average teacher assignment in this column, and the average class enrollment, or class size. And you can see, we range anywhere from in the Fine Arts, having an average class size of 26.8, down to Science, where we have 17.2. Now, Science, you need to understand, because it looks like low numbers, and actually, many of those are double classes because of the lab, the lab courses. But again, we have emphasized to you in the past that our average class size overall is 20.33, and again, for Rutland County, that's the, that's by far and away the highest of any of the areas. What I'm faced with doing, as my colleagues are in all of the schools in the district, is trying to divvy up that, that remaining amount of money amongst the different departments. No easy task by any means. We went through the budget process early on, not knowing about the aid that we would not be receiving, and made some projections on what we felt were what we needed to provide a good education. That $101,000 is only a fraction of the entire budget. Obviously, everyone's aware that the vast majority goes for professional staff in regards to the major portion of the budget. What I would like to point out to you, I'll shut this down, is that, the changes that we've made for this next year, which have an impact, will be our Russian course that we're running through the VIT, Vermont Interactive TV. We'll have twelve to fifteen students that are able to take that course. Right now, as of this past Friday, we had ten students that have registered for that course, or had made a request for that course. Professor Tom Byer from Middlebury College will be teaching it through the Interactive TV. He's donating his time to do that. The cost for each of the six vocational sites, or Technical Center sites, is $1,700. What the, what BTC and Vermont Interactive TV is trying to do now is to come up with some funds to help defray some of those costs. Also, there's a cost of about $49 per student for texts, cassettes, and workbooks for the Russian as well, and about $150 library cost is the, is the other aspect of it. We also are offering this year AP Chemistry and AP Physics, obviously, brand-new courses, needing texts and lab manuals in both those areas. We're talking probably between the two. We're very fortunate that we have been able to locate an AP Chemistry text with a copyright of 1994 that we can get used at a substantial discount from the, from the regular price, so that'll drive down the cost of that substantially. One of the other changes that we are, are making is that we are, with the addition of a person within the district who's coming back after sabbatical, she's going to be at our school half-time, will be picking up some of our health classes, and there's kind of an exchange, and I'll go through all the players, but eventually what it'll lead to is one of our physical education instructors, who's also driver ed, will go full-time driver ed, and that will cut down on the amount of driver ed that we have to contract out for driving after school, so that'll be a substantial savings in doing that. Other things I wanted to mention, in that $71,000 request for text supplies and materials, you have to figure in that those AP Chemistry, AP Physics books are going to be included. Russian will be also included. We're in our second year of a plan for Social Studies to pick up another fifty texts. This was our first year of a new freshman Social Studies program, and we picked up fifty texts this year, with the idea we'd pick up fifty this next year, followed by fifty the following year. So, we're in the second phase of that. Also, we look at, within that, not within that, but in the entire budget, the new, other new courses would be the Pay Center Math and Pay Center Spanish textbooks. We have a number of areas that we're trying to replace textbooks. Probably the most glaring, our Algebra III text has a copyright date of 1978. The books are actually older than the students that are taking the course at this point in time. Chemistry, we also have three separate editions we're using, 1979, 1983, and 1987, so they're trying to update those as well, at a substantial cost. Many of the curricular areas also looked at replacing small numbers, whether it be five or six, they picked the five or six worst books and replaced those. Almost all of the curricular areas have gone to rebinding as many books as they possibly can to also to save the cost. So, there's a substantial amount of money involved in about approximation, I'd say about $60,000 of request for texts, and obviously, that, that can't come out of the entire $71,000, so we'll, we'll have to do some picking and choosing along the way, make some determinations. The other thing that's not included is a request for, for equipment. One of the, one of the largest requests ends up being our band, and it's kind of a double-edged sword. We've been fortunate that our, our numbers have increased substantially in band and chorus, but the other side of it is that we have sixty band uniforms, and we have ninety-seven people in band. Needless to say, we're, we're looking at trying to pick up forty-five additional band uniforms, and talking with Vicky Madison today, just to clarify matters, she said she anticipated there'd be twenty students that would be moving out of the marching band for graduation or whatever, and there'd probably be between thirty and thirty-five that could possibly be coming in, so there would be a need to, to increase that. But that's, that's at a cost of about $18,000 for the forty-five band uniforms, so just to keep that in the back of your mind. There are a number of other areas. Biology's looking at, the AP Biology's looking at trying to get more microscopes to the tune of about $2,000. Right now, they have, I believe it's seven microscopes that they share at twelve different lab sites, so there's a constant movement of those, those microscopes, and unfortunately, anytime you start moving equipment, costly equipment, anytime there's any kind of damage or anything else, it's also costly damage, so it'd be ideal to, to increase that, those numbers. One of the areas that the Library Media Center would like to look into is the Meridian CD networking. We have the CD ROMs within the library, but if we, for the purchase of about $5,500, we can network the CDs throughout the building. They would actually reach all of our, our gateways throughout the building, so that the students couldn't make it to the Information Center, but they're in a classroom, they can actually use the teacher's computer to get on, to log on, to use the, to use the CD ROMs. Teachers, staff can actually, would be able to log on from their, from their desks. I think it would be, if, if at all possible, we'd love to see something like that. Needless to say, we understand the circumstances, and we need to make some tough choices, but should, should things change, and we'll keep our fingers crossed within, within the next several weeks, that the Legislature will make some, some positive changes in regards to, to education and helping us out, but that's about the extent of it. Any questions that anyone might have? John?
How often does the band put on this uniform and actually march with it?
The number of parades, I think it depends on, on the year, John. I know there, there're usually two or three in the, in the fall. There's the Loyalty Day Parade, the All-State Parades. I'm not sure, depending on where the All-New England's are, sometimes they even go to that, I believe. But probably...
Seven times.
So, okay, I was going to say seven or eight times.
So, it's a cost of $18,000 for forty-five more uniforms?
That's what they're projecting.
Four hundred bucks a piece.
Is it time to change the uniforms?
Those uniforms have been around a long time.
Well, just in, in my own observation, I've sort of been curious, watching parades and kids in parades, and had the good grace to be in Disney and see kids on parade as well, and I mean, it just feels like it'll, everybody's struggling with this issue, and I'm assuming it's financial. I mean, we can't be the only school district that's not being able to put four at all. So, it feels like they're doing some adjustments, and certainly changing the uniform style as a result of that. I think obviously, it's something we need to consider as well, in light of the fact that, that uniform certainly isn't very effective in the summer, or if it is, it's effective. I mean, kids pass out, maybe. I'm just wondering if maybe it's...
Needless to say, but even if we make the change over, like the hundred uniforms, it's going to cost a substantial amount of money.
For sure.
Maybe we find somebody that has this uniform that just changed the, or whatever...
Everybody wants it. Everybody wants.
Whatever they, they need.
What happens with a band that's going to Orlando to March at Disney World this week? What are they doing in terms of uniforms? Curious.
I'm not sure at this point. I haven't had a chance to talk to Vicky about this specific. Uh, I know they've been sharing uniforms off and on. Some drummers drum at some of the parades, don't at others, that type of thing. They've kind of traded off so that, uh, everyone gets an opportunity, but, uh, but it's not everyone at the same where. Or they've been at, uh, some parades because they don't have to wear the full uniform, they've been able to, to have them all there and, and at these parts of it.
I'm just curious, Bruce, what does an advanced placement textbook run?
Uh, well, you break it down, they're, they're, they're very expensive. They're probably right around, uh, uh, I'd be, I'd say about, but they're about seventy-five to eighty dollars a piece.
The used AP biology texts would be seventy-five dollars?
Uh, the textbooks have gone right out of the, out of the, uh, out of the atmosphere. Their, their sky hat's been amazing over the course of the last ten years, the changes in the prices.
Do you buy them by subject or per, is it? Yeah, it's by subject. So in other words, Spanish one would buy, um, Spanish textbook, you know, I'm sort of, okay, where, let me just tell you where I'm going. Is there any possibility, and maybe you've already explored this, but in light of David's direction, um, to community partnerships, is there any potential for, um, adopt a textbook or adopt a great subject from corporate sponsorships? It just feels like that's not a tremendous burden on a corporation. I could be wrong if you were to adopt a subject area, but, and certainly then with a little book plate saying gratitude for. I'm not sure if it's anything that they might or corporations might be looking for, but it feels like it's a way to involve or create maybe a different kind of partnership in a way to support, um, the purchase of tech. Just a thought.
That'd be great. Madeline?
I have a couple of questions. I also think that band thing is five because like Halloween, they don't wear their own uniform. They make their own. I want to know the number of seniors that are graduating and the number of freshmen you anticipate coming in.
We're looking at about a hundred and, well, last minute, it was a hundred and ninety-nine graduating and, um, we're figuring between two-twenty and two-thirty coming in, freshman.
So do you need textbooks just for those increased numbers or do you have surplus textbooks? I certainly remember a discussion last year, at least, um, in some cases, students weren't able to take textbooks home because there were not enough of them.
There's never a surplus of textbooks.
So there are other areas that might need them just to meet the needs of the students that are coming in.
And that's, that's why the, that textbook ends up, the, the requests end up being so high because they're trying to anticipate and ordering, not try not, not to order in bulk of thirty or forty, but if we can pick up an extra ten because we think there'll be ten more coming in in anticipation.
Then the other thing is, I don't see guidance on this at all. Is that because it falls someplace else?
In regards to text and?
No, in regards to, uh, I've seen, or like graduation seems to me, to be an odd thing to be, um, highlighted in terms of the administration budget. It makes me think that it costs a lot of money for kids to graduate. But I don't see guidance on here anywhere. So I wonder, does guidance have a budget? I mean, there's testing.
Yes, oh yeah, they're, they're within that, that seventy-one thousand also.
Bruce was just trying to point out some of the highlights of the budget and I don't, he wasn't trying to deal with.
I didn't break it down all the particular.
No, well, but it just seemed that guidance, I, I was just looking for it because it seems that everything else you mentioned came close to seventy-one thousand dollars. So I was wondering where the guidance.
Well over seventy-one actually.
Right. So guidance, testing and, and everything associated with that other than salaries is out of, item four.
Still fall under that number four, yes.
Bruce, is it anticipated that we will be able to assimilate twenty to thirty additional students and advance placement, uh, chemistry and health, the additions without adding staff? Are we gonna be able to do this?
Um, that's my, my hope, uh, that we think with the, the adjustments that we're making with the, uh, physical education driver ed and health, that should balance off nicely and give us a little extra on the other side of the, uh, the afternoon driving. The, uh, the, in science, what's happened is that, uh, this, this year was the first year we offered the AP bio to the, the sophomores. So there was a more of a glut there this year than there will be this, this, this coming year. So that we're hoping that will, that will balance off. I'm anticipating that we'll, we'll be able to hold with the, with the staff that we have present.
What kind of an enrollment do you anticipate in the advanced placement courses?
Um, I checked the computer today. In the AP chemistry, I believe there were eleven students. I mean, AP physics, right now, I think I, I think there were seven. So, again, anytime you, you reach the, um, the upper level of classes, whether it be AP courses or, or French or Spanish five or, or calculus, those numbers tend to be a little lower as the students are self-selected out of those particular courses.
Something we can offer in a smaller place can, uh?
Um, um, are, are we in fact adding an additional person at the high school with the return of the person who's on sabbatical?
Halftime. Halftime.
Okay, so, so that is an additional one.
Right.
Um, will we still, uh, have the flexibility to, uh, for foreign languages at the middle school by the use of the high school person?
I'll really have to wait to see what the, end up, what we end up with student requests. That won't, uh, that will be completed until the end of next week. So I'll have a better idea of what the student requests are.
Okay, so there's a potential that we'll be picking up additional staff in that person at the high school.
There could be. If, if, if needed, we could, yeah.
Okay. Um, Pace Center courses, can you explain to me, uh, what the basic difference is between Pace Center courses and the other courses? What is it that makes a course Pace Center?
It's, it's basically dictated by the college board. Um, they have the program set up. It's more of a hands-on, uh, with, uh, specific skills, uh, at specific times. It's, it's very close to, to an AP course, but it falls through the college board. They, uh, there's a prescribed test that they take at the end, um, and it's usually mid, or early, early to, early to mid-May comparable to the, to the AP test. It's, it's more of a hands-on, more, uh, more involved, uh, course, whether it be the Spanish, the math, or the, uh?
The teachers, the teachers in Pace Center have gone and taken a special training session.
Yes, they've gone to training.
And it's a, a national program and they've picked separate schools to be pilots for this program. And we were fortunate enough to be one of the selected pilots.
Uh, so the, the basic difference between is more hands-on kinds of, uh, teaching, learning?
More involvement into the.
And a heavier reliance on supplies and text.
Well, no, actually what's happened at this point is that, uh, in order to be a part of the, the Pace Center, there's a, there's a fee because of, they, they give to you all of the packets, this prescribed material that you use for each of those, each of those particular areas. So those are the materials that you buy.
Okay, so this, this five thousand dollars is for prescribed?
If there is some text involved, there's a math text, but there also is a prescribed package of, of materials that you're also responsible for.
That started out only as an English package, right?
Right.
I think, is math the first word?
Uh, yes, math.
Math was first, math, English, and Spanish, we picked up this last year.
Would the AP chemistry and physics be replacing the honors chemistry and physics?
Yes.
So we're really, they're, you're not really adding anything?
No.
Just giving the students the opportunity to take the AP exam?
Opportunity to AP versus the.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Sharon, uh, please, sort of review of that budget. In a sense, we've already approved the budget for the education school with the tuition, but it's still important to go through some of the details. Especially update us on some of the things taking place.
To say to you that the budget at the Tech Center this year looks relatively the same would be an understatement because with our model change for next year, there's a couple line items in here that represent that model change. The budget that you received on the paper are the expenses that were allowed to calculate until the allowable tuition. And that was reviewed, um, at the December regional board meeting. And then again, at the January regional board meeting, um, when, in preparation to submitting a tuition to this board that you approved back in, in January, um, there, there are, expenses are, are really, uh, very mandated by what's allowed in direct expenses for calculation of tuition. And the line items that you see down here represent program areas. In some cases, they represent more than one staff member in a program area. For instance, um, the big area trade in the industrial represents a number of staff, uh, staff members. The majority of the line items are, um, the same as they've been in the past year with just the, um, salary increases. Supplies, um, have been leveled funded. You rarely ever see a piece of equipment represented in this budget. If it is, it's small, less than three hundred dollars. Anything that's more than three hundred dollars, um, I save out, go after competitive grants and Perkins money and stuff, uh, for that. The new line item in here that represents, um, the shift to, um, one-year programming is additional cost for the transition year of a hundred and fifteen thousand. By the end of April or mid-May, I would expect that money would be prorated back into the line items, but it's too early in the process for us to be able to do that. There is money in there for contracted services for academic classes, um, that we'll be needing. Um, and we're still in the enrollment process at this point in time, so we don't know that. The other new item that's in here is the forty thousand dollars that represents the new program and that's the staff, uh, member for the video media program that's in there. When you see revenue down here, um, this is revenue that we expect that we'll be receiving from the state to go against some salaries, um, that are listed above. And these are ones that are either at four, well, by statute, they're supposed to be forty percent. They certainly have received the forty percent, um, salary reimbursement from the state. I believe we've got it down to twenty-eight, twenty-six, give or take on each one. Uh, so, and then you also will see others, um, this line item here, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that state federal grants. You'll see it offset down here with revenue. They match. This probably eventually, when we get all our federal, uh, monies, um, firm, will be less, but so will then we adjust the expenditures. We will not expend any more money than what we have. The regional board approved a tuition of four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four doll, uh, dollars and, and that's with two hundred and thirty-one stews in place. That has, um, incorporated into it and a moral commitment on part of schools to meeting the two hundred and thirty-one stews so that we can come up with our revenue that we need in order to, um, meet this tuition. Um, I think that, oh, and then in terms of the new program, you'll see another item later on in the agenda tonight where, um, I'm moving to sell some equipment and, uh, with, uh, fund that we've had in place for a number of years, the sale of that equipment and some Perkins allocation that we'll be ready to grant for very soon. We hope to be able to, um, pick up the equipment that we'll need for the new video program and also the, uh, line item that's in there, uh, signed agreement with the cable television. So there is no equipment in this line item at all for the new program. It's purely a staffing expense.
What's the work coming with the channel fifteen?
You saw some in action today, did you? Um, we are in the process of, uh, moving all the equipment, um, out of the space. The maintenance people were working in mass today, moving some very heavy equipment. Uh, because they, um, want to take over the, you know, space on the fifteenth of April, um, we're having to do some kind of temporary movements. Uh, we have scheduled a, um, sale on the fourth day of May of obsolete equipment in the facility. Um, so we're moving the heavy equipment into a bay area that we've cleaned out. Hopefully, had that done by the end of the, um, lighter equipment, I'm moving into, um, a classroom area and they will be getting working in there very shortly. We had hoped that maybe we could have the auction so we could move the equipment once, but it, it just doesn't work that way. So we'll move the equipment into the bay area, sell it on the floor, part of the deal, whoever buys it will have to move it out of the bay area. So hopefully, we're publicly moving it, moving it once.
I guess their movement was pretty heavy.
It was. It was extremely heavy. I think there was four, four men working on it on dollies.
Jackson dollies.
Yeah. So, so that's moving ahead. Um, one of the things that, um, I wanted to share with, does anybody have a question on, on this, um, Sharon?
Well, I don't have a question somewhat with, with the direct expenses. I mean, the, uh, costs associated with the tuition rate, but there's another portion of the staffers' budget, which is like overhead expenses? Is that something that's gonna be covered?
I had planned on covering that.
Okay. Uh, I guess what I'm wondering is, uh, since the high school and the technical center are, uh, attached now, I'm, I'm wondering if there are some, any other portions of the, uh, operating costs or the services that are now available to the, uh, staffer center that, uh, are reimbursed somehow to the overhead expenses, like maybe, uh, nursing services or the cafeteria spaces now that the, uh, staffers and students have access to. Have you benefited in, in any other ways by having the buildings?
I think, um, this year, we might start seeing some, and next year, definitely we'll see some. When Cheryl's referring to, uh, the overhead, those are certain, um, costs that you cannot, um, figure into the tuition, but you receive, um, back, uh, from the state operational cost, um, to the district. Uh, can you, um, think of anything that we're able to improve at this point?
Well, I think the reimbursement we get is based on your direct expenses, the twenty percent.
Yeah.
So the more you, indirect expenses you have, it doesn't really help you in the revenue stream. You have to be able to add more direct expense. And maybe we can charge some. I think nursing services is one where you probably can start charging.
And, and, and perhaps, I'm not sure of the cafeteria stuff because I'm not sure of the whole funding with Marriott, but next year especially.
I guess I'm, I was thinking more along the lines of additional space that they would be using as opposed to staffing because I'm, Marriott provides service.
No, space wouldn't go into this. Madeline?
Do you have any handle on how the sending schools are doing as far as fulfilling their obligation or their moral obligation?
Um, let me put it this way. Yes, I do. It's going slow. It's a different year. It's a different concept. And we're asking the sending schools also to fully plan the students' program, um, so that we know what they need to take with us if there's academic need and they know what they want to offer to their students if they're gonna have them there the first period because some of the schools aren't choosing that. So it's, it's, it's more planning than just signing up for a technical course. We have no applications today from Middlebury. They're working. We were down there, um, Regina Cole and myself met with a group of parents of students down there last night. They're working on it. We're hoping to see theirs soon.
I, I guess I'm asking more in terms of if they don't come through. I know that we have a recouping mechanism in place that will increase that tuition and they'll owe us money, but will we owe ourselves money? In other words, if the tuition rate goes up because the sending schools don't follow through, could we have to put in more money because our students' tuition there?
Well, I guess what we should say is every student to the technical center is Well, I guess what we should say is every student to the technical center is a sending school student, okay? The way this works. So, every Rutland High School student is a sending school. So, if Rutland High School doesn't meet the cap that was on the paper for them, yes, you could have to pay more tuition per student.
But we've already budgeted them.
That's what I wanted to ask you. How many students have we budgeted for at 49?
Eighty.
160.
Eighty students.
We budgeted for 80.
But if we put 80 students in a school and other schools didn't meet their quota, the tuition would go up at some point and that would include us. We'd also have to kick it all over the door.
That's my question.
That's right.
So, is there any place in this budget in case these other schools don't fulfill their moral obligation and therefore our cost could go up?
There is no contingency built into the budget.
That's what was my question.
Our cost being our Rutland High School.
Meaning because we had 80 students there.
Yeah. That would have to be in your Rutland High School budget. I couldn't have a contingency in here for Rutland High School. That would have to be in the Rutland High School.
The answer is still the same.
The answer is the same. I thought they somehow, the sending schools and the school that was the site were treated differently, but they're not.
They're not treated differently in the way that the tuition is calculated. They're treated differently in the way the state of Roblox sends vocational aid.
They get more than correct.
Yes.
Forty to 20.
Well, my concern is that the sending schools might not follow through and while it evens out, it's going to impact on our budget. So, when will we know that? I mean, I know you don't know till the door is open, but when have you asked the sending schools to let you know?
We asked the sending schools to try to meet an April 1 deadline. All right?
Look, you also say with respect to Milroar that Sharon mentioned Penny Burner has told me two months ago that they had put into their budget funds to pay for all the students to meet their quota. So, financially, they had built into their budget down there. So, I think it's a case now of a number of folks working through their student population to secure those students.
Right.
They budgeted for.
Right. And so, that was my question because some students may have changed their mind one way or the other. So, I just wondered, so there's no date by which they have to let us know?
Absolutely not. And we charge tuition based on the 30th day of each semester. So, there is two captive days during the year that we can calculate a tuition on, the 30th day of each semester. And if students come and leave by then, we don't, we can't charge. And then we can't charge if they come in until the 30th day of the second semester. That obviously has some flaws. One of the other things that we have been working on with the one-year programming plan, and I know there's been a couple of questions that have come up at the board table, so I wanted to share with you, is on a schedule that blends a little closer to Rutland High Schools to allow more Rutland High School students to participate in enrichments. And I'd have to tell you, negotiating a time schedule with eight high schools and with building and staff is an interesting experience. And I would say this is not perfectly firm, but it's about as firm as what I can get it and it still has a few problems and we're still talking with some schools. But what I wanted to share with you is a couple of characteristics of it that will allow RHS students to access enrichments. Firstly, is we build the schedule on a day one or two, playing off of what's going on in the high school. And we have built the second, third, and fourth block, as you can see over here, matching Rutland High School's middle blocks in the day perfectly. A little change here because our lunch is in there, but we've checked it out and it'll work. Obviously, and those are double blocks, 75-minute blocks. We certainly would have liked to have a 75-minute block up number one and liked to have a 75-minute block on five, but it just won't work. Most of the schools are telling us that want to come directly to us. The earliest they can get people to us is approximately 8:25 in the day. So, if you're going to have a double block, you'd have to go back to eight and that wouldn't work. So, the first block is really built, being built on an everyday block meeting. The two middle ones, or three middle ones, every other day, 75 minutes, matching Rutland High. And then if the last block of the day was a double block, 75 minutes, that meant we would excuse to 3 o'clock. And most schools are telling me that they want their students excused at 2:20. So, you can see I already have a problem here. It's going to 2:30. But we match it. Now, what that would do is allow, when we place our enrichments into the program for Rutland High School students, to pick up some enrichments throughout the day. If you're looking at our traditional program, let's take Carpenter Masonry. On a day two, the Carpenter Masonry student would probably be in three successive blocks, but there could be a CAD class in a block over here that those students would also go to as a whole class. That would have some space available for an RHS student who wanted to take just the CAD class. So, one of the problems in the past is the enrichment classes haven't matched with our Rutland High perfectly and they were semester offerings. And these will be a whole year offering and they'll be on a day-one, day-two basis. So, that should prevent interested students. Any questions on the schedule? It's not perfect yet. We're still working on it. That's it.
Sharon, the rest of the school district went through a major reorganization over the past several years. This year, it's the tech side starting.
Right.
So.
And at this point in my career, it's fun.
Just hang in there.
Variety. Spice of life.
Change up there.
Thank you. Fred?
Chair, one other thing with the Stafford Center. The Rutland City Rotary, for those of you who weren't aware, we had their weekly meeting at the Stafford Center this week, provided with a lovely lunch and some demonstrations of the things that some of the kids are doing. A young man demonstrated robotics with a CAD computer system and two young ladies were showing us how they had used the technology we've put in there to design the houses that we're looking to build on our spec lots for the building project next year and indicated that they're ongoing education. I think one of the girls is going to an aeronautics college in Florida.
The other one's heading to BDC.
I think the center should be commended for the work they've done there.
Thank you.
Just to make sure the details are all straight, the Rotary Club plays its annual $6 a person lunchroom fee.
And they want to come back next week there and I told them not every week.
Your program put on quite a meal up there. It was a very nice change from the usual affair. We're enjoying it. But please, I'm sure that the club members probably mentioned it to you, Sharon, please convey the thanks to Barry and the youngsters because they did a super program. Couple thousand calories for lunch.
Well, they also did a wonderful job for the CAF committee also. At least a couple of thousand calories.
At $6 apiece?
I don't know. David's got a grant.
Goes too fast.
Yeah. Good idea.
John, step back, please. You're going to report those tonight on the kindergarten meeting, some of the developments. Uta Turns is away at a workshop today and I knew it wasn't going to be available tonight, but John has the information to share with us, to share with you.
I do. I have a brief report that is based on a meeting that we had, some direction that we have, that is a result of a discussion that I had with this board over a month ago about the future of kindergarten in our district. We talked about a three-day kindergarten program being in the budget in terms of adding two half-time teachers at Northeast and Northwest. That generated a lot of discussion. What we did after that was to have a meeting on March 14th with interested parents of current and next year's or future kindergarteners. And we had a wonderful turnout of 35 people from all over the city. Our focus that night was to, not to debate the issue of whether we would have five-day, three-day, or whatever kindergarten, but the focus was to try to improve our primary program and especially using what we might be able to do with our kindergarten program. So, with that, we had a group session. We actually broke up into four groups and developed a wish list of what did people think would help improve our kindergarten program. Based on that, I can tell you that I'm not here tonight to continue to recommend that we're promoting a three-day kindergarten with three full days and two days off because consistency, if any word came out of that particular evening, consistency was probably the most important one. We are going to continue to meet with that group and our next meeting is scheduled for May 2nd, 7:00 PM at Northeast School. We've asked, we've contacted all of those people or are in the process of it and inviting them back because we shared with them that we would be doing that and continuing that exercise to take some of these wish list items and see what ones they would like to work on, both in the short term for maybe September of '96 and then in the long term for our kindergarten program in the city. And I'd just like to share with you that list. You can look it over and if you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer what I could. Basically, it's a wish list. It's not prioritized. It is redundant because it's simply a compilation of four different groups brainstorming ideas. But it gives you a flavor of what our future kindergarten parents and teachers and administrators, because we're all part of that process, think would help our primary program, especially at the kindergarten level, and what we will be working on. We may be back this term to visit you and ask you about some changes for next year, but I won't know until after May 2nd. And someone asked a question when I was here the last time in terms of daycare about how many of our children might attend daycare. And the survey I did at Northwest School found that approximately 25% of our students did not go home after school. They might be at registered daycare, they might be at an aunt's or an uncle's or a friend's, but about 25% did not go home.
You said you may come back with a recommendation or a request, but you won't know until May 2nd. What's your intent to get from?
Some small items. I don't think it'd be a budgetary item or at least a significant one, but just to keep you updated on what we would like to do with our program. Did I answer that, Deb?
I'm.
You're looking like I might not have.
I'm wondering today whether I've asked it correctly, so I'm really.
Well, I think if I explain the process that we probably will put into place is to go and gather the group of people and take this list and identify those things that they wanted to work on and pursue and then form groups around each of those activities and try to decide which ones were attainable in the near future and which ones might need some long-term work. So, I think it's obviously the ones that we would come back to you with would be probably easily obtainable and probably not very expensive.
Okay. From my perspective, it's just, I need to stand, I need to be clear that I really support that if change is necessary, it makes sense. It's just sort of making sense of it and the process that we might do it and it feels like that's what you're working on and it feels like nothing immediate is going to happen. Some feedback, I got a significant amount of feedback from the community and people were open to looking at it, but thought perhaps choice was a good way to begin looking at it and blending. I mean, it feels like certainly at some point in time, that may be a direction we need to go in, but it's certainly a delicate population, as you know. And how we go about it, obviously, parents are. I think it's pretty critical as an entry level, as you know, that parents feel comfortable with programs that we put together for that group.
One of the programs that, one of the methods, I guess, that you would know came up most frequently was to have four half-day sessions and then one day, a full day. You know, and I don't know how, we haven't really looked at that hard to see how easily we could implement that, but obviously, we would have to improve, increase the staff slightly to do that. Perhaps not as much as with the three-day.
And I, yeah, my other perspective in terms of looking at is the educational impact. I guess I would be looking to see how that might impact, whether that be more time in school, whatever. So, I guess I've made myself clear about kindergarten and changes in it.
Most of the reading that I've been able to find, you know, they talk about a lot of issues that one might introduce into a primary kindergarten program to improve it. And the bottom line, though, always seems to be, what is your community prepared to deal with? And so, I think when we talk about studies, and people use studies, I think, the term in different ways, where you can do a quantitative study and actually find some specific results, I think that's one thing. But other times, I think studies end up being people's opinions and practices that have taken place in communities and then people's opinions about that. And it certainly seems that there are plenty out there that really have to do with, well, we made this change because the community needed more daycare or we didn't make this change because of perhaps childcare issues. So, it's really kind of hard to find some solid educational facts, but it's, and it's good that it's an extension of the community's wishes, but that's certainly how we intend to go about it because it is prevalent in the literature.
What does flip-flop with high school mean?
Whoa. You shouldn't ask that.
The rest of them seem pretty fair, but they come up with anything.
Flip-flop with high school, turn the paper over. There's also one there near the bottom that says concerns about 9:00 AM start. People are aware that biologically, older children, you know, don't wake up till 10:00.
Or later.
The younger children are running around fresh and vigorously at 4:30 AM. And so, why do we start our secondary schools early and our primary schools later? And I think, I think it's a good question. And I think that's a complicated answer. We do it because of many other needs, but that's a recommendation that people really would like to see. I don't know how soon it will come up.
An earlier start time.
An earlier start time for primary schools, yes. And if it can be done alone, that would be fine, but I'm not sure that would be the case because it would probably domino on some of the other schedules. It's a much more complicated issue than just saying, I think young kids function well early in the morning. Well, we know they do. They also go to sleep on the bus on the way home.
Isn't it odd that when we had the opportunity to set strictly the kindergarten time at a time that was different than the other schools, when we had our kindergarten at the Southeast School, we chose to start it last and start the other Dana, Lincoln, Northeast, Northwest earlier. I guess perhaps it was so that the parents had more time to get the younger kids ready.
Had a lot to do with the busing schedules.
Had to do with busing.
Yes, I agree it had to do with busing schedules, but to have brought the Southeast School kids, kindergarten kids in first and worked the other ones later would have worked every bit as well as the reverse that we ended up doing. But I don't think that it was ever considered that. But I don't think that it was ever considered that the younger kids are up at the crack of dawn.
Not mine, Sheriff.
Why mine works.
Well, the other end of the spectrum is that all the high school kids then go on to after-school sports and all that type of stuff, and you'd be holding a lot of those in the dark if you... Not that no should run the whole thing, but I mean, the bottom line is, is that their day keeps running.
No issues are simple.
Why not do that lifetime?
Well, thank you, John. After May 2nd, we'll probably look to hear something else or something more from you either.
Well, I'm sure we'll be back.
Please feel the school commissioners to attend that meeting.
Sure.
North East School?
North East School is down.
May 2nd.
When is it, May 2nd?
May 2nd.
Thank you. Dave, report on all the CAP activity.
Before I start with the CAP update, Dick reminded you two weeks ago, or maybe four weeks ago, about the Tech Expo, and we were at a Rutland Region Education Alliance meeting today and heard a report on Saturday's events planned for the Diamond Run Mall. And we have a lot of kids involved in this event. There are over five hundred kids in the Rutland area who are involved, over a hundred from our intermediate school and a number of kids from the middle school and the high school, and I'm not sure about Northeast and Northwest, I guess they are too. So I guess we're in the hundreds from Rutland City and all of the surrounding districts. And it's a wonderful collaboration among the higher-end people and K-12 education and business and industry. So if from ten to four, you're out and about on Saturday, go to the Diamond Run Mall, the displays will just be incredible, and we got a little sneak preview this morning. I encourage you to attend. The last CAP committee report that we discussed was at the end of February, and I gave you an update on some of the deliberations that the CAP committee and the three subcommittees, which again are organized around the learning, the fields of knowledge areas of the Vermont Common Core. They've been working hard, all these committees, numbering about ninety-plus people have been meeting frequently, working on curriculum. I can give you an update, a repeat of an update that we received at the meeting last Tuesday. As you know, the CAP committee meets the first Tuesday of the month, and from this point on, we'll be meeting from 5:00 to 7:30 PM at the Dollhouse from this point on. And we have heard about the work of the three subcommittees. Science, Math, and Technology Committee have really put aside the math and science curriculum for the past few months to really work on the development of a K-12 technology plan. And our next meeting of the CAP committee, which will be on May 7th, will be a presentation from the Technology Committee of the work that they have done on this draft K-12 plan, which will, it's sort of a step for feedback and advice, quality control, if you will, before that plan comes to the school board. The CAP committee, as you know, is made up of nineteen people, a fairly eclectic group of people representing the school system, parents, students, two school board members. Ted and Madeline have been very able and reliable participants in all of our committee meetings, and so they really have done a good job developing that technology plan in this committee and will be working from this point on in some of those other areas. The Arts Language Literature Committee, which is chaired by Uda Terence and Glenn Giles, by the way, the Science, Math, Technology Committee is chaired by Millie Kimball and Fay Clark. The Arts Language Literature Committee is also working on their areas of responsibility. It appears that the Fine Arts curriculum is probably the area of the curriculum that we'll be seeing first. By "we'll" be seeing first, I mean both the CAP committee and the school board. History and Social Sciences Committee chaired by Bruski and Mary Casarino reported that health education and physical education curriculum are probably the first areas ready for review. It appears that Social Studies is perhaps district-wide, K through twelve, our most difficult challenge, given the gaps and perhaps some areas of duplication in our K-12 Social Studies curriculum, and is a very significant area of concern, and I think we've known that, and now we're working to develop a more sequential program in Social Studies. You'll be hearing about that. But at our meeting on April 2nd, we spent almost the whole meeting talking about retention. We had prioritized the issues that we felt the CAP committee should discuss as we move ahead in this process, and retention was an issue of interest because, as you know from the last report, we had decided to develop for each of the academic areas graduation standards, that it is sort of exit criteria, what it is that we want to make sure our kids know and are able to do when they leave Rutland High School, and then to sort of allocate the skill acquisition toward that goal, toward the standards, throughout our school system, and by dividing that K-3, 4-7, and 8-12. And the reason for that is to bridge the building gaps by having the curriculum set up that way. So why did we get to retention? Because as we look to develop these standards, what it is that students should acquire, the issue reveals itself, well, what if a student is not able at grade three or grade seven to meet the standards? And what does the research say about retention? What should our district's policy and procedure be? Well, after about a two-hour discussion on that, on that issue, and utilizing the research available to us and sort of developing a set of pros and cons and in the real world, how it works in our schools, there was a unanimous decision to sort of retain the current practice of our district, which is to only as a last resort, retain students when necessary and in as early a grade as possible in their academic experience, but to continue to pursue alternative programming for our students to meet their varied needs. So that is a quick update on what we've done. I will tell you what some of the outstanding issues are beyond retention that we're looking at. Obviously, the format for publishing the graduation standards because we want there to be sort of a consistent and readable without jargon way to describe these standards and the curriculum expectations in each area. We're also going to look at the possibility that some people are interested in creating differentiated diplomas, that is, high school diplomas which recognize achievement of these new graduation standards versus a certificate of attendance. Sort of interesting, too, in the Senate Cost and Quality legislation that's being considered by the legislature now, they're looking at exactly the same issue. We're also going to look at instructional methodology as well as the curriculum itself, and to look at best practices, and when those best practices are identified and proven to be worthwhile, to what extent should there be some consistency or almost uniformity of that approach as opposed to fostering individual creativity? That's sort of an age-old debate. We also are going to be working on an assessment program which matches our curriculum and gives us solid data by which we can compare how we're doing with other schools and other states and other countries, and that certainly down the road is very important for the school district to be able to look at our overall assessment program beyond the portfolio program that the state uses, but to look at more, sort of hard evidence, hard evidence of how we're doing and how we compare to other folks. And then finally, the CAP process includes professional development and a plan to tie the professional development to training, to the curriculum and assessment changes, and also the need to focus on early education, early intervention, and the need to ensure that kids are reading by grade three. So those are the issues that are sort of outstanding that the CAP committee will be working on. This is a more detailed report than, I guess, that we've provided in the past. I also wanted to do a quick grant update, if I will, to usually follow the CAP process. First of all, I'll label this category, sort of the non-competitive grants, and that is that school districts, on the basis of population, poverty criteria, and other factors, are allocated money. Title I, the Eisenhower money, which is professional development money primarily for math and science teaching, although a waiver's been received to extend that beyond math and science. Safe and Drug-Free Schools money. Title II money, which is formerly called Chapter II. Those grants, as part of the change in Washington to block grants, are now being consolidated in a new consolidated federal grants program. That's the good news. The good news is that the grants will be tied in, it'll be easier to write those grants because, as I look back in the last year, they've been sort of spread out over time, and a lot of the grants ask for similar information and are duplicating. And so the good news here is that it's going to be consolidated, it'll be thinking more about professional development and other areas and the district's needs. The bad news is that we found out last week that the total grant allocation will be cut twenty-five percent. So that may be one of the messages of block grants. Secondly, in the competitive area of grants, that is, the grants that don't normally come to a school district or which we apply for both recognition and funding for new and innovative, perhaps exemplary, practices. I did talk to you, I think in February, about the Community Partnership Grant. Tomorrow, a few of us will be appearing before a grant review committee in Waterbury because we are one of the finalists for the Community Partnership Grant. That's a seventy-eight thousand dollar grant, which will in part fund a new youth services center and which will provide some professional development training, not only for our teachers but for other people in the community, including law enforcement, to help us in reducing youth risk behaviors. So that's good news. We're hoping that we'll be chosen, we're at least in the final group. And then secondly, I believe I mentioned, but sort of as an aside, that we had applied for some TURRL fund, T-U-R-R-E-L-L, TURRL fund assistance for our multimedia peer prevention education project. Got that right? It was also the same grant that we applied for, for the Children's Trust Fund. And we got a letter a few months ago saying that they'd accepted our application and wanted to do a site visit, and they sent their executive director from this foundation in New Jersey to see us. And Steve Clark was very active in writing the grant, and it's his program in part that the grant would fund, and this gentleman visited with us a couple of weeks ago, and we decided that it would be best to have the kids who are involved in that program meet him and take him around the school, which they did. And then he met with Steve and with me, and then we went to the Dollhouse and had lunch and talked about it, and he said at the end, he said at the end, "Well, this is a great program, and this is what I think you need to do, and there'll be a check at the end of the week for twenty thousand dollars for the program." So I came back and I told Dick about it, and he said, "Sure, Dave, right, the check's in the mail." Well, in fact, it was in the mail, and we've received the twenty thousand dollars and certain things we need to do, but it will fund that program, help subsidize an existing salary already in our budget, and will help purchase some materials to assist that program at the high school.
Another good six-dollar investment.
Absolutely.
Maybe we could just have him cater.
It's called putting icing on the cake.
So we have received the money, and I'm hoping that next year, we'll be able to expand that. We have other ideas. It has to be in the area of reducing youth risk behaviors. So real happy about that, and that totals are not, I'm sorry, that totals are competitive grants at close to a couple hundred thousand dollars if we're successful with a Community Partnership Grant.
That's to me, we need to be sure to write some grants to support the Dollhouse and some assistance. Other matter of time, we're using it.
Any questions about the grants or the CAP committee? We have two school board members here who can give you the answers on what we're up to as well.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
How are the dinners? I've been there for lunch, but never for dinner.
They're wonderful.
I think you can visit, David. I think you can visit.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Reddick.
Thank you. Moving right along, a couple of announcements, and I want to celebrate some student achievements here with you. First, week of April 15th to the 19th, fifteenth is a bothersome date, April 15th. This is Week of the Young Child. Nothing to do with tax collection.
Patriots Day.
Patriots Week. Week of the Young Child, celebrations will be held at Northeast at April 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and Northwest on Tuesday, the 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So that's in celebration of the Week of the Young Child. There will also be, in support of that celebration, two performances by some crossroads arts groups, so it should be an attractive piece at those two buildings. Again, in the same week, April 15th to the 19th, kindergarten registration at Northeast and Northwest. Schools are asking parents to call for an appointment and sign up your kindergarten child so we can get the enrollment settled and have a handle on the number of youngsters we're going to be dealing with next school year. Some recent achievements from some of our students that wouldn't go unnoticed, I think, unless we mention it here. First, at the middle school, there were five Rutland Middle High School, middle school students that are members of the School Science Club, and their experiment on mummification scored a silver medal at the Vermont Science and Mathematics Fair held at Norwich University on Saturday, March 30th. There were over fifty experiments presented in the junior division, and our students scored one of the ten silver medals. So we certainly want to applaud those students, and I'll tell you their names, James Fowler, Sarah Preszniewski, Shirley Roberts, Bianca Rodmild, and Crystal King. And also hats off to the sponsors, Mr. Welch and Mr. Seitz, who are helping those youngsters in that project and assisting them in that achievement at Norwich University. If I'm not mistaken, I think I saw Steve Welch sitting out there a little while ago. Is he still there? Yeah, he's sort of a quiet guy, hiding behind people out there. In the arts field, during March 28th and 30th, just about a week and a half ago, there's a big New England music festival. This year was held in Groton, Connecticut, and fourteen of our students from the high school participated. So we want to certainly pass on congratulations to students Sandra Gressel, Jonathan Gressel, Kyle Anderson, Tom Hooker, Benjamin Smith, Wyatt Webb, Vianza Tortolino, Jennifer Kuzlik, Christopher Record, Kelly Chamberlain, Jared Olinoff, Katie McLaughlin, Richard Ziegler, and John Stokenger, because they were all selected and participated at that festival in Groton, Connecticut, March 28th and 30th, and they were accompanied and supported by Glenn Giles and Vicki Madison. And that is one real super festival down there. Actually, it's rotated around New England every year. Continuing with some announcements, the committee has ten people, including two school board members, that worked very diligently in the past several weeks in assisting in this Assistant Superintendent search process, and we have been able to reduce the pool down to four finalists, and that's where the point we're at as of yesterday afternoon. It's a real difficult process, but I wanted to thank that committee for their assistance and their hard work in that. We're moving on, and the goal to bring a recommendation to the school board at the next school board meeting. Finally, a school calendar adjustment. Superintendent Henry Burnham down in Mill River caught us in something. We had mistakenly set Memorial Day holiday next year on the calendar for the traditional, very, very traditional day, May 30th. We have been for years in Rutland County, actually following the federal holiday, which is the Monday before that, and I think that date is the 26th Monday, and I would simply like this board to so note that particular change and we'll reissue the calendar and be consistent with past practice.
Do we have to adopt that?
I would like the board to adopt that.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the amended Rutland City School Calendar for the year 1996, 1997, as presented and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Tomo.
Second.
Any questions or discussions regarding the motion? Any questions or discussions regarding the motion? Madeline.
I would like you to look at in-service days again. I know that that's something that doesn't impact on other districts because John mentioned consistency before in the kindergarten discussion. And as I look at the calendar, in the 17 weeks between August and December, there are eight weeks, there are only nine weeks that are five-day weeks. And yet, when you look at the calendar from January to June, where you have 21 weeks of school, there are only three weeks that are not five-day weeks. And I'm not counting vacations in either one of those cases. And especially if you look at that October, November area, it seems that, you know, the ninth week of school, they're there for three days, the 10th week they're there for five, then the 11th week they're there for three, and the 12th week for four, and then a five-day week, and then it's Thanksgiving, and then they're in school for a couple of weeks and it's the winter break. And so it just seems to me that students are freshest academically, I think, in the first semester. And in the winter, when probably they're more likely to need some breaks, we have them going constantly. So I would just ask you to look at those in-service days. It particularly affects elementary school teachers, elementary school students, and they're the ones who I think early on are the most anxious to take into.
We will take a look at that, Madeline, at the very next cabinet meeting we have coming up early. I also like they add an calendar change of, I've already spoken to the other superintendents in the county about it, and they will, you know, recognize that that was an error we made. So they, I know that they'll be making the same change.
In following up on Madeline's concern about the in-service days and the early release days, do you know, when you set this calendar, what your agendas are going to look like for any of those days, or are they developed as the year goes on depending on the needs of time?
They would be developed later, sir. We'd certainly try to develop some of the things in August, and people could come back in the middle of August, and we wouldn't have them set for now. But I'm sure in this particular coming school year, they'll follow some of the work of the CAP committee and some of those activities.
So the motion is to change Memorial Day from the 30th to the 26th.
That's correct. Further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor of the calendar is amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Lincoln School lease. We're actually going to be signing the lease with the Calvary Church as the sole signature on it. And that one's just about ready to go, and that will do two things for us. It'll bring in a little additional income for the budget next year, probably net about $10,000. Also, more importantly, it will have a tenant in a portion of the building and be occupied, and it helps an awful lot in terms of vandalism issues. They're going to be occupying just the newer wing of that building. It's about one-third of the whole unit, but that'll still help us in terms of the vandalism piece. So that's going to be a 30-month-to-month lease, and they know that if any deal comes up and we have a chance to sell the building, that that's it for them. But they're willing to take that chance because they know that you don't sell a big building like that very fast. So I'd like to have your support of that.
The chair would entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign a lease with the Calvary Bible Church to lease Lincoln School on a month-to-month basis, beginning in the ensuing school year.
Second.
Discussion or questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Finally, there's a couple of Stafford Technical Center items I'd like Sharon to speak to you about, please, and seek action.
In your package was a memo written for the list of obsolete equipment from a variety of program areas at the center. This is collection of donated equipment, equipment bought with federal monies. I believe some of the welders are 1940 vintage. So you can see it's a wide variety of pieces of equipment. At this point in time, the list is circulating through technical centers. Anything that's purchased with federal money, technical centers by state statute have the right to purchase. We have not had a technical center purchase any piece of equipment from us since we started doing our auctions some 10 years ago now. I intend to put these, if you give us approval, put these up for public auction on the fourth day in May to recycle the money.
You need our approval today. The chair would entertain a motion to authorize the sale of and disposal of obsolete equipment from a variety of program areas at the Stafford Technical Center as listed on the memorandum dated April 3, 1996.
Thomoe.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The second item is approval of purchase of computer equipment for the center. It's kind of like the ship flies in and flies out, new and old. We're getting rid of some old things. We need to purchase some new computers. We received six quotes from different computer companies. The computer package is 10 computers, 16 megs, CD-ROMs, two printers, and one scanner. And the low bid on that package is to Northshire Computer Service for $18,527.
The chair would entertain a motion to accept for approval of purchase from Northshire Computer Service, but amount not to exceed $18,527, computer equipment for the Stafford Technical Center.
I so moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this for?
Federal monies.
Federal money. And this is for a particular program or for the use at administrative level?
No, instructional.
Instructional.
We're debating. The original purchase was, or the original idea was computers would replace the teacher stations within the facility because that would handle our thesis software program at teacher stations. We have another computer lab that's functionally outdated. It's four years old. It's our CAD computer lab. Right now, what we're working on, we're going to purchase these. What we're working on is to see if the CAD stations can run the thesis. And if the CAD stations will run the thesis, we'll move the independent CAD stations up to the teacher stations, and we'll set these up as the new CAD lab and other software program issues. But they will be instructional, and they're not administrative at all. John?
This is all paid for through federal funds?
Correct.
I see two, the two bids are relatively close together. You've got Microtech and Northshire. Where's Northshire from?
Northshire's on Woodstock Avenue.
Oh, okay.
They've been in Rutland, Iowa about four years now. This would be our third purchase. They build their own computers.
Well, if it was federal money and it was that close, I just want to make sure we're getting it from somebody.
Yeah, it's a little. It is.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there any new business to come before the board? Madeline.
I've got two things, actually. One of them might be old business, but since it's from last year, it's new business for this year. And that has to do with the public access stations to the Vermont Department of Libraries that we were supposed to have at the high school. When we met with the state librarian three years ago, one of the big selling points of the purchase that we did was the connection to the public library and the fact that our students would have this access. It's my understanding now that the state may not have the money to fund it at the public library, and therefore, our students are not going to have that access. Do you have any insight into that, Dr. Brothers, and you want me?
No, I don't have any more insight than you do. I've heard the very same thing that you've heard.
Well, I really feel that the State Department of Libraries made a commitment to us, and based on their commitment, we went ahead and purchased a library automation system that integral to that was the fact that our students were going to have this kind of access. And I guess I'd like to see us pursue that in terms of, you know, the value of their commitment and what they're prepared to do to help our students have this access, particularly as we go into GovNet and other kinds of access. You know, why shouldn't kids be able to do those kinds of searches? So I would like to pursue it.
There is a meeting I'm attending within the next two weeks with Patty Clink on that issue that Paula Baker's asked me to attend, to lend my support to that cause. So I'm certainly going to attend that one because that was, that so far has been a disappointing feature.
Well, that was the key factor in my giving my support to multi-list as opposed to something like follet, and that was a difference of $20,000. And so I would like to see us pursue that because I think it's not fair to our students. And the other thing is, has to do with our school newspapers. We have wonderful school newspapers at all of our levels that are very informative and give students an opportunity to be creative. But part of the Vermont writing process is proofreading. And I believe if something is published in the name of the Rutland City School System, it should be grammatically correct, and it should have proper spelling. And if that means it takes an extra week to put out the issue, I think it's worth it because it says something for education when education publishes things that are not accurate. And I can remember hearing when my children were younger, "Don't stifle their creativity." And I remember saying, "Fine, when is someone going to teach them how to spell and write complete sentences?" And I would like to see our newspaper advisors urged to look at these productions so that the finished product represents perhaps a little bit better the school system. And I don't want to take away from the kinds of things that are in them. I just feel that we have to model what we expect, and I think the newspaper is an area where we should do that.
That's a point well taken. We certainly recognize that and have seen some of those same signs.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business to come before the board? Is there any old business to come before the board? Anything from policy that anyone on that ladies' group knows about?
We're going to be meeting at the dollhouse.
I'd like to let the board know, we've had some discussion about the next regular scheduled meeting of the board on the fourth Tuesday on the 23rd. Based on the head count that I took two weeks ago, and it was followed up by the superintendent's office last week, it appears that the very best we can muster on the 23rd, which is during school vacation, if everybody made it, we'd have six board members. The following week, the 30th, we would have eight. The superintendent's plan is to bring us the recommendation regarding the assistant superintendent, and he doesn't want to put that off too, too long. On the other hand, that's a big enough decision that we don't want to make it with any fewer board members than necessary. So in consultation with the superintendent, the board meeting scheduled for the fourth Tuesday on the 23rd will not take place, and a special meeting will be called on the fifth Tuesday of this month on the 30th. So our apologies to anybody who's inconvenienced, either at the board table or in the public, but in consultation with the superintendent, we're making the best decision in our judgment that we can make at this point.
Michael.
Yes.
I know the superintendent had to change his plans in order to accommodate us, and I appreciate the fact that he was willing to do that.
Okay, at this time, the chair would entertain that following a five-minute recess, the board retire to the superintendent's office for the purposes of an executive session to discuss contractual and real estate matters. The premature release of information regarding those subjects would place this board at a substantial disadvantage in the opinion of the chair.
Thomoe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board is in recess for five minutes? Thank you.